All right, looks like we have a full house. So I'm going to call to order the Monday, October 12th, 2020 City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with a roll call. Mayor Mike Fournier here. Commissioner Prush?
Here.
Mr. Macy?
Here.
Colo?
Here.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Lavassar?
Here.
And Commissioner Dubbuck?
Here.
Okay, there's been a request to adjourn to go to closed session to discuss attorney-client privilege information as well as pending litigation. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Dubbuck? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassar?
Yes.
Mr. Dubbuck?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we'll stand by until we get the all-clear from Ms. Schwanger when we're officially in closed session. No? All right. Okay. Well, we're going to resume our public portion of the meeting. Earlier tonight, we did call the Monday, October 12th, 2020 meeting to order. We did adjourn to discuss attorney-client privilege and information impending litigation. We'll do a roll call again real quick here to kick things off for this portion. Mayor Mike Fournier here. Commissioner Dubbuck?
I'm here.
Commissioner Prush?
Here.
Commissioner Douglas?
Here.
Commissioner Colo?
Here.
Commissioner Macy?
Here.
And Commissioner Lavassar?
Here.
All right. Before we continue the rest of our meeting, Mr. Gillum, do you mind giving us a quick update on some of the nature of the city's ability, recommendation, et cetera, to meet digitally at this point, given some of the things that have taken place with recent decisions even at the Supreme Court of the state of Michigan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I sent an email out to the City Commission this afternoon in case any of the other members of the staff or anyone who's watching from home has not heard that the... A week ago Friday, the Michigan Supreme Court in answering some questions that were certified to that court by a federal court judge had indicated that the governor did not have authority under Michigan law to issue the executive orders that he she had been issuing since April 30th of this year. That information, as it went to the federal court, was information that went to the federal court judge. The federal court judge, at least as of this afternoon, still has not taken any action to issue any kind of a ruling in the case that he has in front of him regarding the governor's authority to issue executive orders. There was also litigation that was pending in the Michigan court system, specifically in front of the Michigan Supreme Court. That involved a challenge by the Michigan Legislature to the governor's authority to issue executive orders. The Michigan Court of Claims had indicated that the governor was within her authority. The Michigan Court of Appeals had indicated that the governor was within her authority. That issue went up to the Supreme Court, and this afternoon, in fact, the Supreme Court did issue an order reversing the decisions from the lower courts in ordering that as a matter of law here in Michigan, that the executive orders that the governor had been issuing since April 30th no longer had any effect whatsoever. So that is the legal status right here in the state of Michigan. We are here tonight for a virtual meeting. While the Michigan Legislature is currently considering amendments to the Open Meetings Act that will allow us to continue virtual meetings, the Senate approved some amendments last week. The House is scheduled to take up those amendments tomorrow. The amendments that were passed by the Senate last week that have gone to the House now would authorize remote meetings going forward. And not only that, but that authorization would be effective back until April 30th. So for lack of a better word, the legislation would essentially be grandfathering any virtual meetings that have taken place since April 30th. Admittedly, tonight, we're in a little bit of a gray area, but given the fact that the Supreme Court just issued its order this afternoon, this is a meeting that we already had noticed and scheduled and posted as a Zoom meeting. There are individuals and entities that have business on the agenda tonight. They have a right to have action taken as far as those agenda items. The recommendation that I made to the Commission this afternoon in my position is that because tonight's meeting had been noticed and posted as a virtual meeting, rather than try to cancel the meeting, or there's no way we could have converted it to an in-person meeting, given the time constraints, my recommendation is that we move forward with a virtual meeting tonight. We'll see what action the Michigan House takes tomorrow, but the information that I have is that the House will be approving the amendments, and at least for the time being, we will be allowed to continue to have virtual meetings as the City Commission sees fit. But again, we should move forward with our Zoom meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. All right. We're going to now move with the rest of our agenda. Commissioner Macy is going to give an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Macy?
As we gather tonight, I want to first recognize Commissioner Colo in his first meeting and ask that everyone keep him in their thoughts, prayers, and considerate reflections as he enters this new phase of his public service in the hopes that he will make wise decisions to improve the city of Royal Oak and the lives of our residents. Today, on the second Monday of October, there is an ever-increasing recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. In that spirit, I think it's important to consider humbly our place in this world. Royal Oak was first incorporated as a city in 1891 and as a city with roughly our current form of government in 1921. The history of humanity in the small area of land that is now called Royal Oak dates back long before that, of course, up to and including the Native Americans who lived in this area, treading the Saginaw Trail that ran right through Royal Oak. As we make decisions for our future, we must hear the voices of these Native people, who were the first people to truly discover this part of the world and who lived in this area for thousands of years before any Europeans set foot here. We must listen to their descendants, who continue to speak out to protect those lands today. We must learn the history of how our country mistreated those first residents and face the truth of the unspeakable horrors imposed on Native Americans. Let their stories be told as a reminder of our duty as public officials to respect the dignity of all our fellow humans. May we walk with care on this shared planet and speak respect and kindness to its fellow inhabitants. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Macy. Very well done. Very wise words indeed. We're now going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can stand, I ask that you do so. And Commissioner Colo, why don't you lead us in today's Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job, Brandon Colo. All right. So now, this is, we're down to item number seven on tonight's agenda, which is the swearing in of Commissioner Brandon Colo. The swearing in, not the swearing at, swearing in of Commissioner Colo. And I see we have Judge Mineke here. Good to see you, Judge Mineke, as you, as always. I have to be honest, I'm going to have to defer this to Judge Mineke because I'm not sure how we do this virtually. So Judge Mineke, the floor is yours.
All right. I always enjoy being invited to this fantastic occasion when someone commits to this level of public service. I've had the opportunity to check in with Commissioner Colo last week at my courthouse and meet his beautiful family, and it's nice to see, and I'm really hoping that I've got the names right, but I think Henry and Kennedy, right? I got that right? So it's good to see you, especially now because we were all masked up last week. So it's good to see everybody's faces remotely.
Thanks for the time, I'm one of them, so.
That's right, Kennedy, I don't think had her mask on, so she was stealing the day anyway. All right. So Commissioner Colo, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brandon Colo...
I, Brandon Colo.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan...
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully perform...
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties...
The duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner...
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And Mr. Colo, I know has some exciting ideas for the city. I know that so many members of the Commission are excited to work with you, and I think that the, our city is going to greatly benefit from your dedication, determination, and vision. Good luck, Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Judge Mineke, and very encouraging, exciting words for a brand-new Commissioner. And Mr. or Commissioner Colo, we're looking forward to the energy and passion that you're going to bring to this Commission, some new, fresh ideas in the debate that will follow. So through the debate, through the dialogue, through the constructive wisdom that all of us will endure from the new idea you bring, this city will be better off. So thank you for stepping up to the plate. Thank you for putting yourself out there. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to all the Commissioners, and I really look forward to working for Royal Oak.
Very good. And, you know, we highly recommend that, you know, you have Carly advise you on every topic, that we get, you know, the optimal wisdom for every decision in front of us.
That's what the airbutts are for, she just... Okay, you guys can go to bed now.
I call up Emily.
Well, thank you very much, Judge Mineke, once again. All right. This brings us to item eight, and I see Mr. London on. I didn't say hi to him in the beginning because we got kind of started all very abruptly here, and we're going to have a report on the Veterans Events Committee Ruck 22 and Veterans Day Virtual Events Report. Mr. London, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everybody, Commissioners and City of Royal Oak. David London from the Veterans Events Committee in Royal Oak, and unfortunately, this last season, we did have to cancel the Memorial Day Parade for the first time in 100 years. So we plowed ahead focusing on Veterans Day and the ceremony, and what we've had to do is sort of shift gears moving forward. So for Veterans Day, what we're planning is a, it's a virtual event where people can watch on TV, they can chime in on Facebook, there'll be Facebook Live as well, but we are having a physical ceremony at the War Memorial on Veterans Day, and we invite everybody in the Commission to attend, but we will be being responsible and socially distancing there. This year, we're going to be having, we'll be having the invocation by Reverend Christer from Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. We're going to have a guest speaker, which is the VFW State Chaplain, Jennifer Smith, U.S. Army. She'll be speaking, and so it'll be very similar to past Veterans Day ceremonies to honor our Royal Oak veterans. It'll just be much smaller in person, and we'll be broadcasting that live as well as recording it for broadcast later on in WROK. But we do, I would like to take this time to invite the mayor to say a couple words as usual at the War Memorial on Veterans Day. So if you can join us there for some socially-distanced ceremony, we'd appreciate that. But as you mentioned, the Saturday before Veterans Day is our annual Ruck 22 March, and yet again, like the other ones, we will be going virtual this time. Just because we have a pandemic doesn't mean that the situation of raising awareness of veteran suicide is any less important. So we will be holding on 11/7 this year. We will be holding a virtual Ruck 22. We've been inviting everybody to go out and sign up, purchase for $22. This year, you get a Ruck 22 green beanie to wear as you join on, join us on your own, not on location, for a 2.2-mile Ruck march to raise awareness for veteran suicide, as well as all the proceeds this year are going directly to the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 154. They've worked with us in the past. They're the ones that gather all the collections, the donations, foodstuffs, clothing, everything like that. They feed, they clothe, they take care of needy and sick veterans, and they're based out of Macomb County, but we love working with them. They're fantastic. So all proceeds this year go to VVA Chapter 154. Everyone will, who signs up, will be getting their Ruck 22 beanie, and we will be there on the day of actually broadcasting live on Facebook, an actual 2.2-mile Ruck march. We hope everybody can join us, but if not, you can join us in spirit. But we would like people to sign up, get their beanie, and help us donate to Chapter 154. But we're plowing ahead for 2021, which will be the 100th anniversary, 100th Memorial Day, and we are, we are planning to do an in-person parade next year. But for now, both Veterans Day and the Ruck 22 March are going to be virtual with live components, and if you can join us on Veterans Day at the memorial, we will be marking off six feeted areas for people to join us, and I hope to see everybody there. We'll be sending around flyers to both City Hall, as well as a lot of the organizations around town, with more information about Ruck 22 March, as well as the Veterans Day ceremony and how to be able to watch those. So thank you very much, and thank you for giving me time.
Mr. London, thank you for taking the time. Thank you to you and Buddy, who helps make the Veterans Day ceremony a success, and thank you for all your efforts, especially on the Ruck 22. This is a really important initiative, not just for the outreach and charitable contributions that are raised, but, you know, for the awareness itself about veteran suicide, and we can't thank you enough. And we know, even though that the current pandemic is, you know, not allowing to do some of these things in greater scale and in person, it's almost harder work, I imagine, for you and the team to figure out what the right way to do is to make sure that we carry out these tasks. And you've delivered on the mission, you and the teams, and we're very grateful for you, your efforts, and everyone else's efforts to make these, among other things, happen. So thank you from the bottom of the heart of the city of Royal Oak.
I appreciate that. We've got a great committee, and we'll continue our work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. London? Oh, Commissioner Douglas. Sorry, Mr. London.
That's all right.
Sorry. Did I infer that you do want Commissioners to attend live, or will there be no audience at all?
We are not inviting the public to join us on Veterans Day. We can't stop people from showing up. It is a public space, but what we will be doing is marking off in the grass in front of the War Memorial. We will be marking off every six feet, so if people do show up, whether they be Commissioners or people who just wander by, we are asking that people watch it at home, the general public, but since you are right across the street, we do extend the offer that you, if you want to come and stand outside, or you can watch online for whichever way you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. London. All right. All right. Well, we'll see you definitely on the 11th. Mr. London?
Thank you very much.
All right. That brings us to item nine, which is the Fire Department Awards. I see Chief Cummins glowing. Thank you for participating. Very grateful for your participation. It's good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll hand this topic over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for letting us, for the third year in a row, conduct our Fire Department Awards in conjunction with Fire Prevention Week. Little bit different this year, as with everything else, open house has been canceled. Some of the things we like to do have gone virtual, and we've, we've created some links from our fire prevention that we just shared today. So hopefully, we can get back to normal next year. With over 4,000 runs a year, you would think that we would have plenty of life-saving awards to sift through and find worthy candidates, but like I mentioned, every year, trying to get most of these guys to say that they did anything special is tough. So that being said, this year, we only have two awards. We have one life-saving award and one meritorious service award. I'd like to do the life-saving award first. So in May of this year, our fellows at the station on Woodward and 13 responded to an unconscious person CPR in progress. So about as bad an initial start as you can get. When they got there, the patient was unresponsive, and chest compressions were being performed. So they transferred care to our crew. They reevaluated the situation and, and made a good catch in the sense that the airway was in fact blocked. They had pulses, but the airway was blocked, and they were able to use a laryngoscope and some forceps, open up the airway, go in, actually remove about 30 cc's of obstruction from the airway, and the good news is, is the patient began breathing on their own and was actually conscious when we transported him up to the, excuse me, to the hospital. But without a doubt, one of the caveats, if you will, that we place on these life-savings awards is that it has to be a direct relationship to your actions. So we run on a lot of people that maybe, you know, maybe, maybe not, would not have made it through. Those are judgment calls. This is one where absolutely, five minutes later, it's a terrible situation, and the actions of these five people save this person's life. I'd like to read their names aloud, if I may. Lieutenant Dan Stars, Sergeant Mark Finnitzer, firefighter Chris Trailer, firefighter Joe Azar, and firefighter Nate Matthews, were the firefighters that responded to that call, and I'd like to congratulate them on a job well done, and they will be receiving a life-saving award this year. The second award that we have is a meritorious service award, and I'm going to read this exactly as it was submitted to me, except I'm going to change the last line. So firefighter Greg Vick, three years ago, started, he designed and created and produced annual Royal Oak Fire Department Breast Cancer Awareness T-shirt that he then organized the sales of, and all the proceeds from those sales have gone to Gildas Club Detroit on Rochester Road here in Royal Oak. To this date, the proceeds have exceeded $5,000, and it helps support over 10,000 cancer patients, cancer survivors, and affected families in the Royal Oak community and greater metro Detroit area. He took this mission on himself. Nobody asked him to do it. He had a family member that was diagnosed with treatable breast cancer and took it on himself to raise awareness and, more importantly, raise money to help support the people, the emotional support that they need going through their treatment. So in summary, and this is the part I wanted to quote, firefighter Vick should be recognized and commended for the good work he has done and continues to do in the name of empathy, compassion, and community service. And I'm just going to change the last line from nomination, as I hereby award firefighter Greg Vick the meritorious service award for the Royal Fire Department, and congratulations to him, and thank you for all of his good work. We're really proud of everything he does.
Thank you, Chief Cummins. How about a round of applause for all of the recipients? I mean, we're incredibly proud of our fire department, and, you know, the stories you just shared with us, certainly the recipients will be deserving of those awards and just exemplify in our testament to not only the strength, but the courage and the aptitude of our, of our fire department and firefighters. So our thanks go out to the recipients for what they did, and certainly, we have a community that's grateful, and I believe we'll all sleep a little better at night knowing that, you know, we have a competent and courageous fire department that's there for us when we need them, when we're at our worst. So thank you, Chief Cummins.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me recognize him here.
All right. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Okay. All right. Thank you once again. So this brings us to item 10, public comment. Has been typical now for a number of months. Folks that want to contribute to the meeting in lieu of coming into City Hall, we ask that they call in and leave a message regarding the agenda topics. Ms. Schwanger, I presume we have public comment for this evening?
Yes, Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission. We had 11 interested participants calling to public comment, and I'll play those messages for you right now.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Theodoro. I live at Royal Oak Cooperative on Coolidge and Merrill, and I'm calling regarding the new law to allow parking on the north side of Merrill, and I'd like to voice my opinion against it for serious safety concerns. There's already way too much traffic on that small block for the residents, children, and pets, and there's definitely a safety concern there. I did want to bring up the trial blocking of westbound traffic from Woodward to Coolidge, cutting through on Merrill, I think it was several months ago before COVID. So the block's definitely been on Royal Oak's radar for being problematic. So adding more parking would just cause more chaos. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to leave my phone number, but I will if you wanted to give more information on what our neighborhood is like there. It's, my cell number is 507-206-1552. And again, my name is Nick. I live right there at the corner of Merrill and Coolidge, and I do see way too much traffic cutting through and speeding through at high speeds, and it's just very dangerous. It's already very congested and chaotic. Thanks for listening. I hope that you will disallow that parking for the few residents that live on that one block, actually, quite a few residents that live on that block on both sides. Thank you. Bye.
My name is Catherine Theodoro. My address, 3106 Coolidge. I'm just calling to tell you that I'm opposed to the plan of double parking on Merrill. So dangerous, I can't imagine what it would be like going northbound on Coolidge, trying to go east on Merrill with opposing traffic and no place to go. It's a formula for disaster. Thank you so much for taking my call. Well, we'll look forward to good judgment on this issue. Bye-bye.
My name is Eileen Coleman. I live at 3180 Merrill Avenue, and I'm calling because I oppose aligned parking on both sides of the street. I feel it is not to the interest of the community or the people who live here. Thank you.
Claire Napolitan. I'm calling regarding the parking on Merrill that I am, I live on Merrill Avenue, and I'm opposed to having parking on both sides. This is going to cause major congestion. The streets are too narrow for cars to pass by. So I am opposed to having parking on both sides, and I am for keeping it parking on the one side as it is. Thank you.
This is Mona Hollinghausen. I live at 3179 Arrow. If there is parking on both sides of the street in the morning at between 7:30 and 8:30, I will never be able to get out of my driveway due to traffic. It's backed up halfway to Woodward, and they will not let me out of my driveway. Please don't do this. There's just not enough room for two cars. Thank you.
My name is De'Ann Williams.
And I'm calling about the Merrill Street consideration for parking on both sides. I personally feel that is not a good idea for us. I see it has quite a bit of traffic on it, the traffic cutting between Coolidge and Woodward. And parking would just really make that crowded. I live right at the corner of Woodward and Merrill, not Woodward, Coolidge, right at the corner of Coolidge and Merrill. I would personally be impacted by parking on the other side of the street. So that's my comment is I do not recommend that change to the parking in the area. Thank you.
Hello, this is Norm Honinghausen. I live at 3179 Merrill. And I do not want no parking signs taken down. I would like to have them left up because of the traffic that goes down this street. If you take those signs down and people start parking there, you will have a lot of accidents down here because employees for Belmont and Belmont visitors will not slow down and will not take the time to cooperate with the public out here. So please do not take the signs down. And if you do, please make it one way and one way going from Coolidge to Woodward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Beth Harrison. I live at 4261 Cooper Avenue. I had requested that, I live on the corner of Cooper and Dakota. And I had requested that the area on the Dakota side of my home be made permit parking only. When businesses are open on our corner and surrounding areas, there's really not adequate parking. So people are parking all along the side of our house, my house, and in the front of my house. The people across the street across Dakota, for me, have a permit parking only sign. So nobody parks over there. And I would appreciate if the parking could be curtailed on my side with one of those signs. I currently care for an elderly relative who is not very good on his feet. And when he's dropped off at my house, it's just easier to be brought in through the side of the house where people could potentially be parking. Also, excuse me, I do that one to two days a week. And I occasionally also babysit for my nephew, who just, him and his wife just had a baby. And kind of the same thing, it's just easier to bring them, have them park there to come in. It's just, you know, the lax parking when there's businesses around me and Dream Cruise and any other events like that, just make it unyieldly. And I would, I would request that I be granted that permit parking only on the side of my home. Thank you.
Please, Sherman. The idea of having Merrill Avenue be a two-way street is ridiculous. You're going to have trouble with plows coming through during the winter time. You're going to have dangerous situations with kids and elderly people who live in these apartment complexes. Backing out of the driveway will be virtually impossible between 3:00 and 6:00 during rush hour traffic. Traffic moves very fast up and down the street. People are going way over the speed limit. I have seen cars exceed the speed of up to 45 to 55 miles per hour to get from Woodward to Coolidge or Coolidge to Woodward. People go through the stop signs. People do not pay attention to pedestrians. This is a dangerous and ridiculous idea. The idea of a two-way street is idiotic. It's like trying to lead somebody to water who doesn't have water. Or what I'm trying to say, the base I'm trying to say is just a stupid idea. So you need to really think twice before you do this. Because if any idiot really wants to park on that side, why don't you make them a deal and tell them that for $1,000 a year, they can park on that side of the street? They have an own personal parking sign with their name on it. And they can park there for $1,000 a year. That's how I look at it. Have a great evening and take care.
Hi, my name is Gee Grant. And I'm a resident of Royal Oak Cooperative. The call ended today to oppose parking on the north side of Merrill. The street is much too busy and I believe it will present problems with the entry and exit of the premises. And even more so during the winter months. Requesting the proposal not being honored. Thank you so much.
My name is Catherine Waite-Mann. And I live on Merrill Avenue between Woodward and Coolidge. And I just wanted you to know, I just came home and was making a left-hand turn onto Merrill off of Coolidge. And there was oncoming traffic and there was, if there were parking on both sides of the street, it would be impossible. So it's going to cause a backup on Coolidge if there's parking on both sides of the street and there's cars coming down Merrill, turning onto Coolidge. So thank you very much. Goodbye.
Mayor Fournier and members of the city commission, that concludes the public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. This brings us to item 11, which is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Douglas?
Approval of the agenda?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. A discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Perusch?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Levaser?
Yes.
And Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Okay, we have an agenda established. That brings us to item 12, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to speak of anything of the consent agenda separately? Pull anything off? Does anyone, no one wants to pull anything off? So the consent agenda now consists of the city commission meeting minutes from September 14th and September 28th, claims from October 6th and October 9th, approval of purchase orders, designation non-provost status, Oliver's Foundation, approval of contract for individual defense managed assigned council coordinator, approval to request to fill additional services, Normandy Oaks Construction Administration, approval of Normandy Oaks Eastern Soccer Field Improvements, Department of Public Services requests to fill automotive technician vacancy and receive and file the non-action items since September 20th, or September 2020, investment report, 2023 quarter training evaluation forms, and assignment of general library and public safety balance. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dubach, second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion. Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote in reverse order as I see it. Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Levaser?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Perusch?
Yes.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Then I vote yes. Okay. This brings us to item 13, which is the discussion of the Kim Gibbs Memorial Garden in South Barton Park as requested by Mayor Fournier, Commissioner Dubach, and Commissioner Colo. I do see Ms. Harrison has dialed in. I'll just kick off this topic very briefly. Mr. Filipski and I had a wonderful opportunity to meet with Ms. Harrison, Ms. Sykes, and Ms. Bills to talk about their idea and proposal for a memorial garden at South Barton Park to honor Commissioner Gibbs and her public service and memorialize her legacy. And frankly speaking, they did an amazing job pulling together some plans and that weren't just beautiful in nature, but, you know, brought a lot of sentimental value to their proposal. So what I'd like to do, certainly, you know, credit where credit's deserved. I want to make sure that Ms. Harrison, I see as on, can speak to the proposal and speak to their request and needs. And Ms. Harrison, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Really appreciate it. And the floor is yours. Ms. Harrison, you might still be on mute. We'll see if we can.
If you're on a phone, Ms. Harrison, it'd be star six would unmute you.
Yeah, try star six.
Or can Ms. Schwanger unmute her?
I have tried a couple of times and it does not seem to be unmuting. And now it looks like she has left the meeting room. So I'm going to keep my eye on the waiting room.
Okay, we'll give it a couple of minutes here. I think it's very important to hear from Ms. Harrison on this. Ms. Schwanger, is it possible maybe to call Ms. Harrison directly?
I don't know if I have a phone number for her. I didn't record the number she called in on. Let me see what I can find on the email request that we received.
Ms. Schwanger, I could send you a message with that number.
Thank you, Commissioner Levaser. That'd be very helpful. In the interim, would you like me to share my screen with the picture of what they proposed?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea for the commissioners to get familiarized with with the layout and the design and take a look and, you know, maybe save some questions until Ms. Harrison gets back.
Ms. Schwanger, I presume you have that number now?
I do, and I've just dialed it. Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission, what we're going to attempt to do is have Laura speak through my phone into the external speaker here at my desk. And hopefully it will be loud enough for you to hear her explanation of the memorial garden. Okay, are you ready, Laura? Okay, go ahead. Can you hear that at all?
We can barely hear. Maybe try to turn it up a little louder.
Yeah. Can you hear? Go ahead, try again, Laura. No.
Mr. Schwanger, is it possible maybe you could call in to the meeting and then merge yourself in with both Ms. Harrison and yourself onto the Zoom call?
Cannot, because then we would get feedback if I was trying to do it on two devices that close together.
Do you think if Ms. Harrison called in again, that you could unmute her? Is that possible?
She's going to do exactly that. She's going to try to call in again and then I'll unmute her.
We'll give it a minute and as soon as Ms. Harrison gets in, we'll listen for her voice.
Ms. Harrison is back on the call, but I still can't unmute her.
She just need to hit star six?
Yes, star six, Laura.
All right, I'm not hearing anything.
No.
Should be, should we move this agenda item to a later part of the agenda till we can figure out the technical difficulties or?
Well, when she calls in on a phone, apparently I cannot unmute her, so she's going to have to unmute herself.
Okay.
And too complicated, I can't call her to tell her that because she's on the phone, so, and she does not have the capability to put this on her computer, apparently, so. And Erica Sykes was out of town this evening, which was why Ms. Harrison was covering the meeting.
Okay. Any recommendations from the team want to do here? Chris Apres?
I hate to not hear the presentation and the thoughts of all these people who are trying to hear from. Is there anything that we need to do tonight as a city commission to move this forward so that it doesn't get delayed? Given the fact that we're coming up to the end of a planting season for this year, if they want to get anything done this year. Assuming that we can't connect with them tonight and we put it off to another meeting or whatever. This, maybe Mr. Phillipskey would know that as to whether or not there's anything we need to do tonight in order to keep this moving forward.
Well, I think, I guess the biggest issue, there is a little bit of work that we could do if this, as designed, you know, got the approval of the city commission, we would have to do a little bit of removal work and we, I guess I'd want specific approval to remove some burning bushes. If you can recall the park, if you're looking at it from Troy Street, there's, oh, anywhere, probably upwards of 12, 13, 14 of these bushes there that really obscure the view. You can't see the park and it actually creates kind of a, something of a safety hazard. So as long as there wasn't any, any kind of issue with that, I'd like to have our department start work on that.
And so maybe what I can do is in lieu of Ms. Harrison not being able to present, what we can do next time is really have the, the team that put this together kind of walk over everything. But the basic request, Commissioner Prush and fellow commissioners is that if you, if you've been to South Barton Park, we have a beautiful gazebo there. And, you know, usually you're starting from the garden and then trying to raise money for a gazebo or a structure. I've done a wedding there or so and a couple of them and, you know, wedding ceremonies, one of the duties is mayor, a great privilege I have. And, you know, and not to say the park looks a little tired, but there really isn't a lot of great landscaping in and around the area. So when Ms. Harrison and Ms. Sykes and Ms. Bills and a number of others in a group started raising money and pulled this design together, it seemed like a really good place to, to, one, you know, help South Barton Park out, but most importantly, a great spot to remember Kim. If you look at the design, certainly there are a lot of, a lot of thought went into the types of plannings that would be there. And one of the areas that I think is really special and such a really nice touch is that the group was able to think about taking plants from Kim's home garden and actually put them there in the, in the design. And so they'll forever, you know, be a part of Kim here in this garden. And so I think there's a lot of, not a lot of things that need to be worked out, but given the planting season, I mean, the team has raised the money. You know, regardless, there is, you know, probably some work that could be done anyways around there if something for whatever reason didn't work out. And I think it'd be appropriate to at least give our DPS some direction to start preparing the ground so that if things needed to be planted in the fall, they could be done so, or, you know, get everything ready for the spring. Because, you know, there's no sense in delaying such a great proposal to remember Kim by. So, you know, it's, I don't know if you had a chance to visit out there, but I do think it, you know, it warrants our support and warrants us given direction to DPS to support with some of our equipment and machinery and a little bit of labor as well. Mr. Phillipskey, did I capture everything correctly?
Yeah, I think, I think you did. There's actually quite a bit that we could do this fall and I'd prefer to do it before leaf season starts preferably. Because in the spring we get soft ground and it just makes things more challenging. But yeah, we look forward to helping with this. It's a beautiful design.
Mr. Prush?
I'll move on that we authorize DPS and city staff to do whatever is necessary in order to prepare the site for this memorial garden and to assist in whatever ways I think are appropriate in order to move this project forward.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, second by Commissioner Buck. Discussion. Mr. Douglas?
Honestly, I, I think this falls into the purview of our staff. I mean, I'm happy for us as a commission to formally bless it and to bring it to the attention of the public. But, I mean, this seems like something our staff would do routinely and I'm, and I'm, you know, delighted that their commitment to do it at the commitment of the volunteers who have helped raise money and brought a lovely design to us. So of course I support the motion. I would have allowed the motion or the action to go forward even at the direction of the city manager.
Anybody else? Mr. Gillum?
Commissioners, it's a, it's a beautiful design and I commend the, the residents that have been involved in, in, in developing the design and doing some of the preliminary fundraising and, and hopefully this will be a productive partnership between the city and residents and friends of Kim for a long period of time. But I, I think we just need to, to make clear to everyone right on the, on the front end though, that this is city property up there and issues about how the property is going to be maintained and what long-term arrangements are going to be done for the the design and use of the memorial garden are going to be decisions that are going to be made by the city and not by a dedicated group of volunteers. Again, I appreciate everything they've done, but again, I think we just need to make sure that expectations are clear as to the fact that this is going to be city property and it will be with the assistance and, and, and support hopefully of the residents, but it's going to be the city that's going to be maintaining the garden up there. That's my understanding anyway.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, we had a lengthy discussion about that with the, with the volunteer team and, you know, there are of course opportunities and desires and willingness to help out and maintain it, but we wanted to take the default position that, you know, you know, the city would, would support in the maintenance. You know, there isn't currently right now, there isn't a revenue stream on renting the, I almost said pergola, the gazebo there. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, I learned by, you know, just a recent wedding was, not that we had to scoot some teenagers out of there, but they were sitting reading a book and, you know, it would be nice to have, to be able to rent that facility and put that into a fund that can help maintain the gazebo, but also maintain the gardens around there as well. So, you know, if you look at the simplicity of design, I feel regardless, you know, we should, the city should have a, you know, some sort of a better landscape design plan there if you haven't been out there. But this is just a good opportunity to, to not only, you know, have a, have better landscaping, but do it in a way that, you know, lifts up the memory of Commissioner Gibbs in the park, you know, in a vibrant part of the area that will, will be seen and a lot of people will be able to go to and enjoy many different generations. So that's right, Mr. Gillum, but I do think, you know, part of this will be, you know, we make the commitment to, to put some DPS resources into it and, and yeah, there'll be some maintenance to it and I think, you know, we'll get some help to the extent that we don't, it's a cost we absorb. And we think we can offset that cost with, with, Mr. Phillipskey can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, at least some of it by, if we look at, you know, charging a little bit to use the, at least to make a reservation for the gazebo. Not to use it on a daily basis, but, you know, if you want to make a reservation to assure that you have it, if you're getting married next Tuesday at 5:00 PM, you might want to, you know, have the option to at least spend 50 bucks, whatever it is, 100 bucks to reserve the gazebo to ensure nobody else will participate in your wedding, for example. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Well, I'll just, I'll just say, Ms. Harrison, if you're listening, Ms. Sykes, Ms. Bills and the rest of the crew, we really want to give you the opportunity to present this. This is your idea. This is your work. I mean, I suspect we're all up here very, very happy to support for obvious reasons, but we would like at a later date, an opportunity for you guys to show your hard work here and the magnificent work you've done. So, but with technical issues tonight, we're going to, we're going to move forward with this resolution and then, you know, take the next step. So I'll call for the vote. Christian Dubon?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Masser?
Yes.
Mr. Collo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, Mr. Phillipskey, thank you very much. All right. I apologize, my, getting back to the agenda here. All right, this brings us to item 14, which is the approval of the September 2020 Traffic Committee Resolutions. Usually Mr. Goddick helps walk us through this, but I see Ms. Donahue, Ms. Donahue, where's yours?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The Royal of Citizens Traffic Committee met on September 29th at 7:00 o'clock and we held that remotely. And the meeting was chaired by our chairperson, Dan Goddick, and I'll kind of go over everything that we discussed at the meeting here. It was a long meeting, so I have 10 different items to present here tonight. And as I'm sure you noticed, we had quite a bit of public comment on one of the items, which happens to be the last one here. So I will go through everything and then we can discuss if there's any questions or potential modifications and we can go from there, if that makes sense. So our first item has to do with Oakmont Street. There was a request for no-through traffic signs and no truck signs there. Looking at the data, it was very low speeds and very low traffic volumes and really no trucks to speak of. And so the traffic committee had recommended denial of that request for additional signs on that block. The second item is at the intersection of Leaustell and Parmenter. This is in the industrial section of the city. Where currently there's a four-way stop and the requested had asked that we remove the stop signs in the north-south direction so that there was free flow of traffic there and stop in the east-west. Ultimately, the, the recommendation was to deny this request really just as a safety precaution. If you remove stop signs and somebody who's used to the area maybe doesn't realize that and are counting on that, we could potentially have an accident. So there didn't really seem a strong reason to get rid of those stop signs and so the committee recommended denial of that request. The next item is another four-way, currently a two-way stop sign that's being requested to turn the intersection to a four-way stop. This is at Curry and Chambers and this one meets the warrant for sight distance. And so it would be appropriate at this location to have a four-way stop and the, the recommendation was to move forward with that. The next item we had one public comment on was the Nakota Road Permit Parking Zone. And this one's kind of a, an odd one. Adjacent to 4261 Cooper, a long time ago, there was a permit parking zone established adjacent to that home and then adjacent to the home on the other corner on the north side of the street. In 2007, the property owner asked that that sign be removed and the permit, permit parking zone on that side of the street get taken away. And now back in 2020, she is asking for it to be reestablished. And so there is already a permit parking zone on the north side of Nakota and she is asking for us to reinstall the permit parking on the south side. And the traffic committee did move to recommend that. The next item is on Ninth Street. This is between Woodward and Lafayette. There were some concerns about speeding and trucks, high traffic. We did a traffic study there and found it was 85th percentile speed was 21 miles per hour, which is great. 299 vehicles per day, one truck, so it really didn't rise to the level of, of doing any changes to that street. Everything seems to be functioning appropriately there and so we recommended denial of the request for additional no-through traffic signs. The next block was for Royal Avenue. This is between Crooks and Main Street, so that's a four-block section of Royal. And the request here was to install speed bumps. Again, there was a concern about speeding and also high truck traffic. The traffic study shows that we have 27 miles per hour for the 85th percentile speed. 486 vehicles per day, which is again pretty good. That's in the low end for a local street and only 1% truck traffic. So the committee recommended denial of the request for speed bumps on Royal Avenue. The next item is Benjamin. This is a major road between 13 Mile and Normandy. We measured the speeds there because there was concern that the speeds have really picked up over the years. This one actually does have fairly high speeds, 28 miles per hour. At one location, 29 miles per hour at a different location for the 85th percentile speed. About 2,000 vehicles per day, which is okay for a major street. That wasn't really a big concern. So the speeds are ticking towards the higher end there and the traffic committee is recommending installation of two 25 mile per hour signs kind of near the midpoint of that section of Benjamin, which happens to be where the railroad viaduct is. So one on each side for each direction of traffic is the recommendation. And then additionally, we'll be working on Benjamin in 2024 as part of a local road millage. This will be the north section of Benjamin between the railroad and Normandy. And so the other part of their recommendation was to evaluate at that time if, if we can do something to help calm traffic further, to help lower the speeds. Something like a pedestrian refuge island or really just a median island to help slow down traffic. So, so those were their recommendations for Benjamin. Moving on, we have a request for South Kenwood between Sixth and Fourth Street. Just to evaluate speed and traffic, again, safety concerns that there was too much traffic and too much speeding. The measurements there showed that it was 25, excuse me, 24 miles per hour with 85th percentile speed. 433 vehicles per day, again, really good data for residential streets. So this didn't really rise to the level of any changes and the committee recommended denial of the request for any additional traffic control on South Kenwood. The next item is South Campbell Road at Fourth Street, which most of you are probably familiar with. That's where we installed a road diet in 2018. And so if you're heading southbound on Campbell Road, you get to Fourth Street and the two lanes merge into one through lane and the outside lane becomes a right turn lane onto Fourth Street. So, so the, the signs and the pavement markings that we have out there right now are consistent with, with what should be in place. But the concern is that, you know, vehicles don't realize what's happening. They're trying to merge at the last second. There's a potential for accidents. There haven't been any accidents caused there yet, but, you know, we've only had a year and a half of, of data to study where normally we like to look at three years worth. But the road diet's only been in place for a year and a half. So we're recommending installation of, of one more sign out there to help differentiate that there's a through lane only and a right turn lane only. So we'll add one of those signs. There's already one out there already. We'll do one a little bit further to the north as a warning. And then also to add some pavement, some skipped pavement markings between the through and the turn lane. Again, to help identify that there's a change happening, pay attention, merge if you need to merge so that people can make that decision a little bit earlier than maybe they would if they're not paying a whole lot of attention. So that was the recommendation for South Campbell. And then our, the final item here, which we had, I think, 10 different calls on, was Merrill Avenue. And so I'll go over this in maybe a little bit more detail. So Merrill, it's been brought up many times in the past. It's, it's kind of one of our more problem-prone streets, I'll say. It's a 31-foot wide local road. We've, we've measured the traffic out there. It's fast. We've got 30 miles per hour for 85th percentile speed, which we don't really like to see on a residential street. That's pretty darn high. And we also see over 2,000 vehicles per day, which is extremely high for a residential street. And we also see over two thousand vehicles per day, which is extremely high for residential street. Eighteen hundred vehicles per day is considered the very high end that you would want to see on a local road. So twenty one hundred is really up there and a concern. So currently, the north side of Merrill is signed for no parking. All the way from Woodward to Coolidge and then the south sign, south side does have open parking. Department of Public Services took a look at this. They weren't super excited about the idea of removing the no parking on the north side. They like having that extra space for plowing and for places to put the snow. They said, you know, they were willing to give it a try, but I will just put that out there that they aren't super excited about it. We also talked to fire and police and they noted that it, a lot of people think it's an emergency route to the hospital, but they do not consider that an emergency route for, for their work. They would only go there if they had a call. So studies do show that on-street parking that ends up reducing the effective width of the travel lane is successful in reducing speeds on local streets. And thirty mile per hour speed out here is concerning. So this seems like one potential solution for that issue. So Merrill, it's thirty feet wide from face of curb to face of curb. So if we had two parking lanes across from each other, that would leave around sixteen to seventeen feet of drivable area. So two cars would probably not safely feel safe going past each other at the same time. And you would do what you do on most local streets. You would kind of jockey off to the side and let somebody pass to get through. So allowing parking on both sides, it's a pretty simple way, like I said, to potentially lower the speeds. And possibly even decrease the traffic on Merrill. If it becomes kind of a pain for people that use it as a cut through, they may stop using it as a cut through. Of course, that's just a hypothesis. Don't know for sure if that's gonna happen. We have had complaints on nearby streets that there's car rental businesses on Woodward. They might try and use this parking area for, you know, like hurt vehicles. That could be another negative side effect if we do open up parking on the north side of the road. So we did not base this request on a petition, but we did make sure we notified the entire neighborhood that this was on the floor, that it was being discussed. We had, I think, eleven comments at the, the traffic committee meeting. Two calls were in favor, nine were against. And I think all but of those that were against, I think they were all in the condos that are on the north side of the street. The south side is all residential, single family homes. And then tonight we had ten more calls and I think some of them were probably duplicates, but some are also probably some new callers with concerns about this issue. So I did want to share my screen here and kind of show you what we were thinking about doing. So just to kind of give you a visual of Merrill and what we're talking about here. North is roughly up, it's an angled street, but let's just say north is up. Coolidge is over here on the left hand side. Woodward is over here on the right hand side. This is Merrill on the south side, all those single family homes. And then on the north side, we have one big condo complex here with the driveway. And then another complex over here, another driveway, and then a third driveway to get to like a retail parking area. So when we, we met at the traffic committee meeting, we had heard all these concerns about how are we going to get out of our driveways? It's too fast. People turning right off Coolidge Woodward are gonna not be able to get onto the road. And so we opted to basically keep a clear zone at each end of Merrill. So keep this entire area, no parking still at the Coolidge end and same thing at the Woodward end. Keep that first basic block a little bit past the alley, all no parking. And then use sight distance from each driveway to make sure that whoever's trying to pull out of a driveway could actually see a car coming. And so that's kind of based on how I set up all the signs that are shown here. And the little black, these are little black cars that kind of show where people could park. If every spot on the north side was full. These are really the only spots that we would allow parking, which is about ten cars. So that was the recommendation of the traffic committee. I understand there's a lot of pushback from the residents. You know, my thought is this is a simple way to solve a really big problem out there, or at least help with a really big problem out there. If this wasn't acted, it's something I would study a year from now and just see, did we lower the speeds? Did we reduce the traffic? And of course, our biologs allow us after one year to reevaluate an issue and potentially go back to the way it was. So that's the recommendation of the traffic committee. And of course, I'm happy to take any questions at this point.
All right, I had to get my screen there out of presentation mode. I do have one question, Ms. Donahue, specifically about the last item. And maybe it's just anecdotal, what I notice on my street, you know, we get a little, we get a decent amount of traffic that comes down my street for various and obvious reasons. And what I do notice is that when cars are parked on both sides of the street, traffic does, you know, it is slower. I don't believe, I believe our street's a little wider than thirty one feet. I can't say for sure. But if you have with this, the traffic pattern seemed to me, let's say it's being driven by Beaumont. You may have traffic patterns that are all going like, you know, the two thousand cars, five hundred of them are going the same way. Let's say in the morning or after work. I'm not sure exactly how those traffic patterns go, but within, let's say, an hour time where traffic backs up. We heard that testimony from people that called in. So my question would be is if you do this, not just the folks that are, that are queued up. You know, what, what would happen if some, you know, a hundred cars, you know, versus that five hundred trying to weave in and out? Because right now on my street, you can kind of see a car coming when that situation happens. But occasionally you get like three or four cars and it's always this awkward jockeying to, you know, manage. Now, I can't imagine if there's like fifteen cars during rush hour in the morning. Like, how would that, like, what would happen in this particular case? Considering that, you know, it's not one way. You would have cars going the opposite way. And if it's really narrow, they're only allowing one car to go down. How does that even happen if you have a lineup of thirty cars because of the lights on, on Coolidge or Woodward?
Oh, honestly, you probably have a lot of honks and aggravated drivers. I think that's, that is what would happen. And hopefully that's what might deter some of those people, you know, go up to thirteen mile or go down. Go out to Greenfield or something. Take a major road to get to where you're going. Stop using Merrill. This isn't for you, your convenience to get out to Woodward, you know. And I think that's something that we're trying to change out here. And it's been really difficult because we really want the neighborhood in favor of anything that we do. And so far, we really haven't been able to find a solution that the majority are in favor of.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Perush.
Um. I visited there early this afternoon and I came off of Coolidge and headed eastbound on Merrill and just pulled over in an area where there was space. And it seemed to me that there were cars parked in front of all of the residential properties on this south side of the street. Where the single family homes are. Those are not super wide lots. Most of them are relatively narrow lots. And almost, and they have, and they have very short driveways. So it's in a situation where if they have more than one car or more than two cars in their household, you're gonna have cars parked on the street. And there were cars parked on that street in almost the entire length of the street in the areas where parking was allowed on the south side. So if that is, if that is a common practice for that neighborhood in the middle of the day. And that doesn't even have people home from work in the evening. You're, I think, gonna consistently have parked cars on that south side of the street. Which means that when you add the parking availability on the north side, as you suggest. You're gonna automatically create very narrow lanes through those areas all the time. Not just on heavy traffic periods. When I was sitting there and I only sat there for about twenty minutes, all of the traffic that was coming down Merrill, and there was a significant amount. And for the most part, it was going from east to west. Came from that turnaround on Woodward, which they use as a very convenient cut through to get to Beaumont via Coolidge. And I think it's probably exacerbated by the fact that now we have Woodward Corners open on the corner. Because there is a very convenient driveway off of Coolidge so that you can get to the market and all of the, the stores and restaurants and so on at Woodward Corners off of Coolidge without having to do the mess turnaround at Woodward Avenue and Thirteen. So you're gonna get some of that traffic additionally as well. It's, it's probably predominantly, if not the majority, Beaumont traffic. But there's an awful lot of people, I would have guessed, are going to Woodward Corners and using this as a cut through to avoid the, the major intersection. So I can see a lot of potential traffic problems by adding that traffic on the north side, just because of the amount of traffic or the amount of parking that already exists on the south side. It's automatically gonna be down to a one lane traffic area, which means as Ms. Donahue suggests, you're gonna have a lot of angry drivers who can't get through one way or the other. So as much as I appreciate they're taking the time to perhaps suggest this. I just don't think that this is gonna solve the major problem. The major problem is the, the cut through traffic that is cutting in off of Woodward through the cut through and heading westbound to get to Coolidge to either get to the hospital or to get to the shopping area. And in juggling with the parking on the street is not gonna solve that problem. You're still gonna have people cutting through. Even if it's down to one lane and it's a traffic mess because people get backlog, they're still gonna do it. They're gonna still think, well, today I'm gonna be able to get through. It won't be such a mess. But it will be a mess. So we have considered and have actually closed residential streets at Woodward for various reasons. Carmen is closed for development just south of Webster. Other streets are closed to expand some parking areas. One was closed south of, just up north of eleven mile to expand the parking areas for some businesses there. So I guess, I guess eliminating that cut through is the solution that I would like to see if that's all possible. I just don't think that this additional parking on the street is going to help because people are still gonna cut through. And I think it's just gonna create a huge mess. Maybe not any accidents because you're gonna be going slow, but it's gonna be a mess.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. I'll just, just building off that real quick and then I'll ask Commissioner Macy. I mean, have we considered other traffic measures such as like right turn only on Woodward where you kind of do one of those like? Like we see often with, you know, private entries where you, they can't come eastbound or they can't come westbound, you know, across. You make look at Rain Garden there and you can only turn right onto Woodward, but the people on Merrill can drive both ways if they want to go to Coolidge. Because you're not gonna turn left on Woodward. You're gonna turn right and then you're gonna turn left. You're gonna do the Michigan left. You know, so are there things like that that we could evaluate that might try to better solve this issue? Because I agree, people are people, you know, no matter what you do, they're gonna try to, you know, sneak past the system and, and, you know, find, especially with things like Waze. You know, and all these new navigation systems, Fisher Perush is absolutely right because all it takes is one person on their phone to figure it out. And then it starts directing at least half the people there because the other half don't want to go. So with a digital age, we're struggling as city engineers. Because you can't, you know, design things because the, the cloud systems out there are directing people to the most efficient paths.
Sure. And we did study, put in that temporary pilot program where we, we did basically restrict people. So they could only go one way out onto Woodward. Gosh, I think that was a summer ago now. And we didn't get very good feedback. People didn't like it. People didn't like how far they had to go out of their way just to get to their home every day. Because they couldn't really just come off of Woodward like they normally would. It works though. I mean, it slowed down speeds and it slowed down traffic and there were a ton of people breaking the rule and going the wrong way. You know, we measured a lot of cars going the wrong way, but maybe they were nervous and they went slow. I don't know, but, but we had good results. We presented it to the neighborhood. But at that point, we need the neighborhood to basically champion that and say, we want to do this. Here's, please give us a petition and let's move forward. And so far, I really haven't, I haven't had anybody come forward with, with really wanting to tackle that large type of change.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. I have a Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Douglas.
That was sort of where I was going with this too, is that it seemed like the petitioner this time was interested in the no turn signs at the corners. And then hadn't done a petition and wasn't able to therefore have that move forward. And this was sort of the default option that came up. So I was wondering about that. I mean, the no turns or, or the no through traffics, if, I mean, if it's worth going back to them. We obviously know that a lot of people on the street are very invested in, in this parking situation and not at all interested in this, the plan proposed tonight. So is it worth going to them and seeing if anyone wants to put together a petition to do those no turn or no through traffic signs? And would that work?
Yeah, generally, we try to avoid the no through traffic. They're extremely hard to enforce and people usually don't follow the rule anyways. The only way to enforce it is for a police officer to actually follow the car to its destination. Which takes a lot of time, you know, and they don't have twenty minutes or fifteen minutes, whatever it is. So we try to avoid those. The no turns, for example, during the peak hours, no right turn here, no left turn here. They, they're better, they're easier to enforce for sure. And people do tend to follow them a little bit better. They still break the rule a lot. The issue again, though, is similar to, to the pilot program that we did. People don't like going out of their way to get to their house each day. And we don't really create special caveats for signage that says no turn this time of day unless you live here, show me your license or, you know what I mean? You can't really go and take, make all these special measures for somebody. It's either you can't turn here. Or we just leave it as is. And, and so again, it's like, well, if, will somebody petition this? We could send a letter to the neighborhood and say, you know, here's some options. If you're interested, you know, please contact us. We could try and, I guess, pull it out of them a little bit more than, instead of waiting for them to volunteer to take it on. Because it is a lot of work. There's a ton of residents there that live in those condos. We're trying to get enough signatures. It's no easy task.
Commissioner Douglas.
So help me understand, Ms. Donahue. Why traffic goes onto Merrill and not onto the other parallel streets in this section? And, and if that's perhaps because of the turnaround on Woodward, perhaps that's the case. But would adding parking, putting more metal on Merrill Street? I mean, crowded streets deter traffic and slow traffic down. So there I would expect with more cars parked on Merrill, there would be an incremental, incrementally less desire for people to use it. Because it would be uncomfortable and slowing and crowded. But would that potentially push traffic to the other parallel streets in that section?
Yeah, that's a very good point and very well could. Because that's still simpler than going past thirteen mile and making a turnaround to get to Beaumont, for example. And same thing leaving Beaumont. So we, all these streets, they all have a similar issue. Merrill is by far the worst in terms of volume and speed. But they all have pretty high volumes for, for a residential street with the number of homes that they have. But that is a really good point. I could see cars moving, you know, to southern streets to cut through faster. And speeding worse on those streets potentially too.
Continuing, um, so the, just to be clear, so you did a study a year ago where you made Merrill Street one way only eastbound.
Correct.
And found that successful, but found neighbors didn't, people who lived on the street didn't like it.
Correct.
So I guess they, I mean, they've made a choice. They, they dislike the inconvenience of getting to their home more than they dislike the inconvenience of heavy, fast volumes of traffic on their street. So I'm sort of not inclined to make changes there if the obvious change that worked successfully a year ago hasn't met with support from neighbors in the form of a petition.
Mr. Perush. Mr. Perush, can you unmute?
You're gonna have to start finding people. It's when they don't unmute, because I think maybe that's the only way that I'm gonna remember to do that.
Like a
I have to put money into a kitty if, every time I don't unmute. Anyway, I was gonna agree with Commissioner Douglas that unfortunately, I think the neighborhood is gonna have to come to some kind of consensus if they can as to what kind of trade off they want to make, if, if they want to make any trade offs. In order to reduce the traffic, you're gonna have to, I think, eliminate the ability to slip through that turnaround on Woodward and make a quick run down their road to Coolidge. Which means either, either limiting their access to Woodward, which means making it harder to get to their house. Or making it a little more difficult to get to Coolidge, one way or the other. I, I don't think there's any way to reduce significantly the traffic on the street, which seems to be what they all want, without inconveniencing them somehow. And I mean, perhaps you can reach out to them and say, look, there are And I mean, perhaps you can reach out to them and say, look, there are options. And which one is the most favorable in terms of, you know, your group? But there doesn't seem to be a wonderful magic wand solution where you can just wave it and say, okay, we're going to reduce the amount of traffic, but everybody is still going to have the same kind of convenience that they have now. Engineering-wise, that's just not possible. There just aren't options like that.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you. So Ms. Donahue and I have had an opportunity to discuss, back and forth and email this particular one and then the Nikota Avenue also. And Ms. Donahue actually pointed me in the way of the study, the pilot program last year and some of the findings. And it's a really interesting study and what comes out of it. And one thing that really struck me is that one of the possible options to, because right, science says the cars are going too fast. The cars are 30 miles an hour, which isn't safe for residential streets. So that's the, that should be the focus on how we can slow cars down. And one of the options that was listed in the study was a rain garden. Instead of closing or allowing parking on the north side of Merrill, a rain garden would be installed into the lane of traffic as a bump out, which would divert traffic around it. So creating an entire block of all diverted cars you might have to weave in and out of from the dry and icy, it would be one bump out. So I think that might be a solution that the neighbors and the city may want to think about because it hits a couple of our, you know, our goals. We are slowing down traffic, hopefully decreasing traffic, and then also it's an added benefit of some green infrastructure in the area. Now, given that is the expensive option. So, you know, we'd have to look to see how we could, you know, funding mechanisms for that. But I'd be interested in seeing how a rain garden, according to the report we had just last year, would benefit this area.
Commissioner Colo, anybody else? Mr. Bruce?
I forgot to add that when I was sitting there watching the traffic light on the street, most of the cars turned right onto Coolidge to go to the hospital in that direction. But there were some cars, I think three in the amount of time that I was sitting there, that went straight through onto Merrill into Berkeley, which is what's on the other side of Coolidge. Enormous, huge, no-through traffic sign right there at the intersection. And sure enough, I watched in my rear mirror and all three cars all the way through. So I agree with Ms. Donahue that that the no-through traffics, they went, all three went all the way through.
Commissioner Colo?
Mr. Mayor, if it's an appropriate time, I think I can make a motion on this resolution.
Yeah, it's always an appropriate time to make a motion. Mr. Colo?
I would move accepting the traffic committee recommendation with removal of 6D and 6J. I'd also like to talk about 6D.
6D and 6J. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duba. So just to confirm, Commissioner Colo, this is a motion to approve the traffic committee recommendations with the exception of the the recommendations for Merrill and also the Nikota Cooper recommendation as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So we have a recommendation with the exception of those two or a motion with the exception, the exception of those two items to go forward. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Colo?
I just want to say, these recommendations that are up right now are based in science and it's, you know, science really dictates that these are some of the best practices. So that's why I'm easily able to support them.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Duba.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Vassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce?
Yeah.
My vote yes. Okay, that leaves two more on the table. We've been talking a lot about Merrill. I would recommend that we probably take care of that one before switching topics. Commissioner Duba?
So with regard to the issue on Merrill, I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this. The fact remains, I think it sounds like we're being told by the engineer that the speeds there are dangerous and it's not just an inconvenience for residents, but it's well beyond what we're shooting for as far as best practices and something has to be done. And I appreciate Commissioner Douglas's point that, well, the residents have made a choice, but I think we have an obligation to put public safety first. So we should explore options that are going to slow down traffic there and keep it safe, even if it is to the chagrin of residents there because we got, I think, public safety needs to be the priority. So, you know, I'm not saying that we force the issue of parking on the north side necessarily tonight, which I think all signs indicate that it would slow down traffic and solve that problem. But Commissioner Colo's mention of the potential to narrow that road through use of a rain garden or an infrastructure project could kill two birds without creating the problem that residents are concerned about with the street parking. So, you know, we're trying to identify more places for green infrastructure projects and we do need to slow this road down. So I'm curious, you know, what folks think about, you know, pursuing that as a potential solution as opposed to moving forward with a long parking on the north side.
Commissioner Douglas?
Commissioner Colo's talk about the rain garden inspired me to do a fast Google image search on serpentine's and chicanes. And there are a number of examples I see, in fact, one even in Kalamazoo, where cities have used that tool to slow traffic. Now, in a way, adding those cars parked on the north side of the road would have that effect. That is, would force people to kind of weave in and out in a serpentine pattern. But some of these ideas might be something worth exploring as a test project and might then have merit elsewhere in the city for traffic calming.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just argue that, you know, we did some tests in the past and, you know, we've done tests like this. We did the bike lanes, remember? I mean, although we didn't execute, you know, fully, we learned a lot. But, I mean, you can put up barrels and things like that to test, you know, things pretty, I don't want to say inexpensively, but also to the, you know, preview of the residents on the street as well. I think, you know, like Commissioner Duba said, I think we do have a responsibility to help with, you know, making sure that speeds remain safe there. And I don't think the residents on that street disagree. I mean, one of their primary complaints is the speed issue. I think that we also have to look at the bigger context as well and maybe, you know, understand what the impact is. You got 2,000 cars. You reduce it in half. Where do those other 1,000 cars go? Do they go on the major streets like they're supposed to? Or do they, you know, go to other neighborhood streets? And I think, you know, for me, you know, you do one thing, you create another set of problems. And we're looking for a zero problem solution here, but really, at the end of the day, we're going to have trade-offs, right? You want the speed to be reduced. You want the traffic to be reduced. There's going to have to be, you know, some likely inconvenience to the extent that we can minimize that and people feel comfortable with it. They can petition us. But I don't, I mean, I even think, you know, doing an experiment, I don't know how Ms. Donahue feels. I mean, every street is different, but if we do something with, you know, cones or lanes or whatever, it might inform us about other similar situations we have throughout the city. So I don't know what we have in terms of an experimental, you know, spirit here. But I do think that, you know, I understand how folks don't want to have the cars there, the parking there. I understand the visual obstruction that can cause anxiety, but there might be a different way to make this work. I mean, I don't think we should spend a million dollars on it, but if there are simple things we can do, do involve the neighborhood there. And at some point, Commissioner Douglas is probably right. I mean, you're not going to make everybody happy on the street and eventually someone has to petition us, you know? But if we get, garner some learnings from it, I mean, and my travels in Europe, I mean, DPS would hate this for plowing, but I've driven on some streets, in many streets in Germany, residential streets, they put these big, huge block planners, every other, you know, they're beautiful. They got flowers in it that you got to drive. And, you know, if you're going fast, you're going to ding up your car and it forces you to slow down. But I don't know how you plow around them, but just ideas like that would be interesting. Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I mean, if we want to do an experiment, the experiment we can do at the cost of like four or five signs is to add parking on the north side of that street, which would, as I've said, have the effect, I mean, cars would have to stop and wait till somebody came through. And we could measure the effects of that while we consider other options. It would mean more metal on the street means fewer cars. It means it's a little more inconvenient and cars will move more slowly.
Yeah, you could also throw a bunch of orange barrels there too. Okay. Well, we have two recommendations currently right now that are open for some sort of action by this commission. Any other discussion on any of them or one of them? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm going to move approval of the traffic committee's recommendations to install the no-parking signs on the north side of Merrill as proposed by staff.
The motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Do not see a second, so the motion fails. Is there another motion? Commissioner Macy?
I'll move that Ms. Donahue puts together a list of proposals for that we can take back to the residents of that street by the next meeting.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Colo. Can I ask a question, Commissioner Macy? Is there a reason why it needs to be so urgent? I mean, essentially, if you're staying with the status quo, you know, putting the pressure on by the next meeting, are you talking the next traffic committee meeting? Or are you talking about the next city commission meeting? And why is the timeline so compressed? If we really just keep with the status quo for a little bit?
So, I mean, I'm, obviously, I am proposing we keep with the status quo until we come up with something different. But I think we've all agreed, and Ms. Donahue said herself, that this is a safety issue in this neighborhood. And so I think there is some urgency to it. I guess I was thinking our next meeting, but maybe you're right. The next traffic committee meeting is more appropriate.
Commissioner Duba?
And just for clarity, I'm curious, Commissioner Macy, are you looking for like boldly vetted proposals? Or like option one, we could do this, here's a cost estimate and how long it would take to do. Option two, we could do this, here's a cost estimate. You're not talking about like drawings and schematics and fully, you know, laid out proposals, or are you?
No. So I'm talking about the way you suggested it, which is giving us several options to consider. I mean, I think we've thrown out some things today. Ms. Donahue had some other ideas herself. She knows better how to really make this work. So I just wanted her to think through some of these options and then see if we, and I think one of them could be this no, this no parking or this allowed parking option. But given, just given those, given her time to put those together so we can consider them all together instead of just kind of piecemeal throwing them out because none of us are engineers.
Let Ms. Donahue jump in here real quick and then I'll go to Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Colo.
Thanks, I appreciate that. So our next traffic committee meeting would be at the end of November, sometime around Thanksgiving. And generally, I would bring our recommendations to that, probably that first meeting in December, which is the 14th. That is a while. That said, I don't love the idea of bringing my own ideas without traffic committee backing them up because that's their purpose, is to help evaluate and make recommendations. So that's my two cents.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I don't, and Ms. Donahue can back me up here or not, but I don't know that there's been a time when we as a commission have instructed staff or a committee, like the traffic committee in this case, to come up with ideas and then run them by the neighborhood. I mean, how do we make sure that we are reaching all of the appropriate neighbors? I mean, are we doing a big community engagement project for this one block, street length? I mean, we have a process and it's a petition process by residents and I'm just not inclined to kind of upset that model and be sending staff out to vet an array of ideas in front of a public that we can't necessarily be sure we're convening adequately.
Commissioner Colo? No? Okay, Commissioner Macy?
So let me clarify on that. I certainly didn't mean for traffic committee to then, for the next step, to be sending this letter out to all of the residents of that area, but be bringing it back to us. But I did understand that the traffic committee did tell all these neighbors already that this was going to be in front of them. So it seems like there is a way to reach out to them and they clearly were activated by this since both the traffic committee and this meeting tonight, we received a number of public comments. I guess I don't think it's impossible to reach out to those residents and ask for their input on this. I wasn't suggesting that that happened before it come back to us.
Commissioner Duba?
And to Commissioner Douglas's question, in my vision, we're not creating something new. If these are vetted by the traffic committee, that would be the appropriate place for the public to engage. Make sure feedback and thoughts and concerns about the options.
Commissioner Colo?
I just say, I would like to see all the recommendations that Ms. Donahue comes up with, even the ones that don't necessarily make by the traffic committee because, for instance, that infrastructure project is not something the traffic committee would do. That's a function of DPS. That's not an engineering. That's not a function of traffic committee. So I just want to make sure we're seeing, you know, I would love to see what the committee comes up with, but I also like to see all the options.
Anybody else? So we have a motion on the table to clarify, Commissioner Macy, it's by the next traffic committee, right?
Yeah.
Those options will be presented, some ideas, and then we'll take it from there. I think Commissioner Douglas and, you know, Commissioner Duba make some good points and we can go step by step. But I think everybody agrees that we should find a solution to help reduce the speed there to the extent we can reduce the congestion and do it in a way that minimizes the problems, you know, we're all better for it. So, all right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Vassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
My vote yes. Okay, that leaves us one traffic committee recommendation that has yet to be resolved. Commissioner Colo?
I move for denial of 6D.
Motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second?
Second for purpose of discussion.
Second by Commissioner Duba for purpose of discussion. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Colo?
So I drove out to Nikota today. I probably saw Commissioner Bruce because I was on my way from Merrill Avenue about the same time as she was. And when I drove by, the thing that struck me about this property is that it is about 100, I believe 120 feet of frontage. And they go through an alley and then there's another set of property where a restaurant used to be. And just listening to the comments that the petitioner made, and she wasn't before, I actually listened to the traffic committee also, and she did appear before the traffic committee. And then it came before us tonight and the comment was that there's too many people when the rest, when, you know, there's a business operating there. And my concern is, is that, okay, if they don't park on that block, where are they going to park? These cars need to go somewhere. It's a long frontage. The petitioner has a driveway that is connected to the sidewalk that goes to that side door. And I understand the north side does have permit parking, but you can only fit about two cars there because there are two driveways on that north side. So that permit covers two cars. So I don't know if I'm in favor of giving one person exclusive access to essentially a block of road.
Anybody else? Commissioner Duba?
Yeah, so I'm not dug in on this one either way, but I think we have kind of established a really, really high threshold for permit parking. It's been a while since we've had, I think, a robust conversation about a particular area. But I know the last few times we've talked about it, it's mostly been denials saying there needs to be some real specially unique circumstance to essentially privatize a stretch of road for the exclusive use of those who live adjacent to it. I know we've turned down neighborhoods along 11 Mile who were concerned about, you know, churchgoers on Sunday parking up and down the street with the understanding that, as Mr. Colo said, those cars are going to go somewhere. So if there's demand because there's a business right next to you because you live on Woodward, there's still demand for that business. So those cars are going to push further into your neighborhood or on your neighbor's street. So the permit parking does not really solve the problem. It just causes So the permit parking does not really solve a problem, it just causes a problem for someone else. That's not really one that we're going to solve because we're not going to, you know, privatize parking on all of our street. So I'm trying to understand how this is a uniquely burdensome circumstance that requires we go back to permit parking. And I'm not sure what I've heard justifies it, just based on the way we've treated these requests in the past.
Any else? I mean, I think from, oh, Commissioner Macy?
So I'm curious to hear what Ms. Donahue has to say in response about that. But I'm also, would like to point out that the other corner property over on Cooper has, does have that permit parking signage. And this was, I think, approved previously and now then was taken away, all this homeowner's request. And so I wonder if we're missing some information in terms of what happened before. But they didn't bother, you know, doing the full investigation since this had been something that she had requested and was removed previously.
Yeah, I was not able to find the original Commission meeting that approved installation of these signs. I searched every possible term in the old archives there. The only thing I could find was in 2007 with the request to remove. And so I think the thought was, if that had never been removed, that permit parking sign would probably still be there today. You know, and I think that's kind of why the Traffic Committee leaned towards approval. I'll agree with you, that's a really, that's a long frontage. There's a portion of it that's signed for no parking closer to the corner, I think, just for sight distance issues. But there's, you can still fit quite a few cars in there, so. I guess I'm not really strongly in favor or against this. It was more continuing what had been there in the past.
Any other discussion points, Commissioner Douglas?
I'm just going to point out that you've got a couple of closed businesses there at the corner of Dakota and Woodward, on both corners, in fact. And I'm just inclined, the permit parking may be warranted, but I don't know that it's warranted now. And I guess I'm inclined and also to agree with Commissioner Dubois that this does not look like an extraordinary circumstance. So I'm going to be inclined, I think, to vote against this proposal.
Just to be clear, Commissioner Douglas, against the proposal from the Traffic Committee, but the motion is to deny. Just so we're on the same page, everybody's on the same page with the motion. Understood?
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I oppose the permit parking.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make sure I clarify before we call the vote because, you know, you got the denial of the non-denial, carry the four divided by five. It's, I'll just make sure, you know, we get it straight before we vote. I actually agree with Commissioner Douglas. I think, you know, for me, you know, it's kind of a wait and see, let's see what goes into those businesses. I mean, if there's a high traffic intense business there or a business that has like a lot of high volume, short-term, you know, parking and lots of employees or something like that, you know, I'm more inclined to look at that area more comprehensively like we did for the Vincetta folks. When Cruz and Muir opened up, there was some things that we just didn't expect with Cruz and Muir and how their business would run, and it made sense to make some changes. And I think in this area too, you know, not to borrow trouble, but I think it would make better sense once we know what's going to be established there, maybe, maybe traffic counts are those businesses that will be there eventually. I assume you'll probably have a restaurant again at the Golden Basket. Don't know for sure, don't know what that means for traffic. You know, we have more pickup orders, takeouts, you know, given the fact that we've all endured, you know, changes in our behavior due to the current pandemic, who knows? But I mean, if there's not an apparent problem right now, I would be less inclined to approve this permit until we actually, you know, can say for sure there's an issue here. And then we have to really be considerate of the type of business and how it's being used and why people are parking there. Does this mean that people are going to go to other streets in the neighborhood like it was mentioned by Commissioner Dubois? We, it's like the parking balloon issue, you squeeze one end, it goes somewhere else. And if you, you know, then the next week we'll have someone coming in on the neighboring street saying, I want permit parking too. And then you have a whole issue and you have neighborhoods that are just thrown up in upheaval because not everyone wants permit parking. So we'll, I'll be supporting the motion to deny, but I'm fully open to looking at it down the road again when those businesses on the corner there at Woodward are more established and we kind of know what they're doing. So the motion on the table is to deny the request for permit parking, basically keep the status quo. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Ms. Donahue, you know, it's a pretty long stretch. Who would be eligible to get a permit for that area if it were permit parking?
I believe it's only the property owner, but I think they can get a few passes. I don't know if it's two or three. Honestly, this is my first permit parking that I've done as city engineer. So I'd have to look up the rules, but from memory, I think it's two or three passes.
All right, nobody else has any, I thought Commissioner Douglas had her hand up for a second. No, okay. All right, I'm going to, again, the motion on the table is to deny permit parking. I'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Perusch.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubois?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Ms. Donahue, thank you for walking us through all the wonderful recommendations from our Traffic Committee and much thanks to the, thanks to the Traffic Committee for all their time and effort they spend evaluating these recommendations and petitions. Okay, this brings us to item number 15, which is the approval of the fiscal year 2021 Michigan Drug Court Grant Program contract for the 44th District Court. I see. Judge Meinike is still on, Ms. Bone? All right. Mr. Break, Mr. Gillon, Mr. Meinike, who's going to, who's going to lead this one for us?
In the absinthe, if anyone's speaking up, it's to introduce this topic is that it's a grant program in the amount of $77,000 from October of this year through September. So that coincides with the state of Michigan's, their fiscal year. So the grant requires approval of the agreement and the acceptance of the terms. So the recommendation is presented to you. But I see Ms. Bone is on the screen and I'm probably remiss in providing very adequate information. So I prefer her to provide that expertise.
Thank you. This grant, this is the third year that the court's been receiving this grant from the Michigan Drug Grant Program. And this year it's for $77,000 and it will help to fund a probation officer and some of the other expendable expenses that we use for this program. So we're asking that you approve this contract.
Any questions for Ms. Bone?
And this is where I get to jump in since it's my, our new court administrator. And it's Ms. Bone, it's hard, it's, it's, it's hard to tell because there's, there's no accent mark on her name.
No accent mark there, Ms. Bone, my apologies.
No, no problem. It was, you know, pretty awesome to be able to hire a court administrator who legitimately could be called T-Bone with the Tammy Bone moniker. But she's done a fantastic job in securing these funds. Now remember, in the environment that we're in right now, that pot is smaller. And so Ms. Bone has had to do a really good job explaining, you know, just what we are able to accomplish with our sobriety court. When I first took the bench in 2013, we really had just a shell of a program. There was, you know, I think, three or four participants. And we've expanded to one of the largest in the area. We are capable of hosting up to 100 individual candidates. And the work that we do in our sobriety court program, it is unique. I know many of you are familiar with problem-solving courts and how important that is and really fits in line with the community's goals that we have one here at the 44th District Court. And every two weeks, we meet with candidates in our program. We encourage them through their, you know, their ups and downs because, you know, that's one of the challenging things about our program is the realization that relapse is sometimes part of recovery. And it requires patience from probation officers, judicial officers, and the candidates themselves that, you know, this is, this is really the program that breeds success in an environment where historically we haven't seen a lot of success. If individuals are placed in regular probation with the type of issues that our candidates face, the recidivism rates are through the roof. And one of the proudest things that we have over at the court is, is at our program, you know, we're approaching 200 graduates. I know that we have, in my own program alone, it's 124-plus graduates. And we've had two re-offenders, and I put those numbers up against any program throughout the state. And that's a great tribute to the efforts of our probation officers. Stephanie Clark is the director of our sobriety court program and she's dynamic. She's truly exceptional. And for a long time, she was carrying this load by herself. And fortunately, because of the Drug Court Grant, we were able to hire another probation officer to handle the sobriety court load and also expand our ability to serve members of the community in need. So previously, when it was just Ms. Clark handling 70, 80 probationers, now with this Drug Court Grant going into its third year, we're able to supply an additional probation officer. And I just, again, I know so many of you, and I've had conversations with so many of you, you know, how important it is that we have a court that responds to the needs of our community, especially when it comes to addiction issues. And so I'm proud to be able to come to you and show that, yes, we are the court that each and every one of you expects us to be. And Ms. Bone's efforts have been tremendous in securing us the funding from a continuing limited pool of money. She's done a great job with that and I'm excited to, you know, see what more good work we can do.
Thank you for that explanation, Judge Meinike, and thank you, Ms. Bone, for all your efforts as well as a welcome to the new role.
Thank you.
Virtually here. So it sounds, I mean, I mean, that was a very passionate plea. And, you know, it appears that, you know, this grant is absolutely essential in not just, you know, helping, you know, the court process things, but to really change the lives of people in our community that are suffering from addiction and suffering from the chance of relapse and really helping them, you know, by, you know, spreading the load a little bit to give that personal care to ensure that we get the the outcome that we're all looking for in this community, which is productive community members that are, you know, can deal from their past and be productive members of society. So that's a very strong testament to what you guys are doing there in the court, Judge Meinike and Ms. Bone, so.
And Mayor, I do want to make sure that any commissioner, any community member, that's the one, you know, really unique part about COVID is that court hearings have to be open to the public, but our doors are closed. So that means that we have to make our hearings accessible via YouTube. So if you want to see what we're doing in sobriety court, it's Tuesday mornings for me, Fridays for Judge Wittenberg. And you can get, you can see the transformation that occurs. It's some of the best work that I get to do. And it really provides further verification of the strength and courage present in the triumph of the human spirit when someone is just given the resources, encouragement and faith that they actually can do it.
So from the commission side, we have any questions? Commissioner Colo?
I just want to say, Judge Wittenberg, I'm sorry, Judge Meinike, I'm sorry about that.
You're right. Judge Wittenberg is fantastic, I'll take that.
I, looking over this, I mean, clearly I think this should be approved, but I actually watched, it tended to be about five minutes of sobriety court, turned into about half an hour because it was so engaging. The participants were so connected to you. You have remembered details about their lives, you know, a man's five-year-old dog and what they were doing the previous weekend. Another woman had just celebrated consecutive months of sobriety. And it felt more like a group therapy than a punishment. So you could see the positive impact you're having on people's lives. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, it's not the most.
Thank you for watching. It's, it is powerful and it really, I don't know how anybody can, you know, I, I tell individuals in our program all the time that, you know, there are courts, there are people that review some of the choices that they've made and sort of disregard them and see, you know, and cast them aside as, you know, not worthy or not having any value. And it's unfortunate because I get to meet individuals that, but for this incredible challenge that they're presented with, they are perfectly capable of being great, you know, employees. And more important than that, sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, you know, productive community members. You know, tune in as Commissioner Colo did and I don't think you'll regret it.
Commissioner Dubois?
All right, I'll talk now. Thank you for the information, Ms. Bone, and Judge Meinike, thanks for bringing this forward. And, you know, honestly, just for the incredible compassionate and human-focused way you run your courtroom. I think it's just a shining example of the community, the kind of city that we want to be and the kind of leadership that we choose. So thank you for that and for bringing this forward. I'm happy to move for approval.
A motion by Commissioner Dubois, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. Any discussion? All right, well then I will call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Perusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubois?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, motion approved and we'll execute the contract. And thank you so much for all your efforts on this one. I don't think we can say enough good things about the 44th District Court.
Thank you.
All right, and we have the approval of the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant for the 44th District Court. There's another thing we can say great about the 44th District Court.
Yes, we were selected to receive this grant. It is administered through the Michigan State Police. It was given through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs and the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It was a formula-based grant. It's 100% reimbursement. And it's for our efforts to help mitigate the spread of the COVID virus. You know, taking over as court administrator earlier this year and then COVID happened shortly thereafter has given us an opportunity to kind of explore all the things that we do do and come up with ways that we can help make it safer for the public and our staff. We've purchased some things currently, but this grant will help as far as adding outdoor kiosks for payments, hydrostatic sprayers, cleaners, an air purifier system to be installed on our rooftop and also some portable digital recording equipment for the courtroom so we are able to do things off-site. So we're asking that you approve this grant contract as well.
Commissioner Dubois?
I will happily move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubois, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. All right, discussion. So once again, thank you, Ms. Bone, for all your efforts.
Thank you.
I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Dubois?
Yes.
Commissioner Perusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, well, great.
Mayor, may I make one last statement before we go?
Absolutely, Judge Meinike.
So I do, as we've talked about, the exciting sobriety court program and then our efforts to make sure that our employees and our patrons are safe in our current environment with the grant that Ms. Bone, again, worked hard. with the, the grant that Ms. Bonet, again, worked hard to get to alleviate any cost burden on the city. And the funds were out there. I mean, that is, Ms. Bonet is truly dynamic when it comes to seeking out funding for, for programs that, you know, that, that, again, make our court more effective and accessible to the community. But one last thing that I want to make sure that all the commissioners are aware of. So we have a program over at the court that's called Operation Drive. Our Operation Drive program, basically, the seeds of that came about when I started, again, when I started back in 2013 and took the bench, I noticed that we have obviously three major traffic arteries that go through our community, Woodward, 696, and I-75. So as you can imagine, there are a number of unlicensed or suspended drivers that come through our community from time to time that are ticketed and then find their way into the 44th District Court. You know, for many years, courts, you know, across the state really handled this the wrong way in, in focusing almost on a pay-to-stay, pay-or-stay plan, really served more as a hand in someone's pocket. I, I thought we, we should and could be better. So we started a, a program where we focused on encouragement, provided a structure, information, because so often, an unlicensed driver had no idea where to go or what to do or how to even restore their license. And now we have this Operation Drive program. And since we've been tracking our licenses restored, starting in March of 2016, since March of 2016, we've restored over 884 licenses. So we're on the drive for 900 right now. And it's grabbed the attention of, you know, courts around the area. And ultimately, the Chief Justice of our Supreme Court is going to come down and visit on October 29th, our Operation Drive program. Our Operation Drive program runs every Thursday. Individuals come in, we have court-appointed counsel ready to help, and the court offers guidance on ways in which they can clear up their license. And on October 29th, at 1 o'clock, at the beginning of our docket, our Chief Justice is going to come in and, and participate in our program. So if any commissioner is interested and wants to log in on that day, feel free to reach out to me. I'll happily send a Zoom invitation with all the information. Or if you just have questions about this program that we're doing, you know, I, you know, we don't spend a lot of time banging the drum, we just do our job. But this is something that's pretty cool. And in, when someone gets their license back, now, when that moment occurs, it is amazing to see because so many people in our region are living in a virtual prison by their, you know, lack of access to decent transportation. And we really are working hard to be part of the solution in that effort. And I think that that's consistent with what Royal Oak, and obviously, we also serve the community of Berkeley, what Royal Oak and Berkeley is all about. So if anybody here wants to log in on that day, again, October 29th, 1 o'clock, we'll, we'll get going on that. And, and like I said, if you want to see what we're doing on Operation Drive, that's every Thursday afternoon, you can see what we're doing to restore licenses of people that come through the court.
Wonderful, Judge Minneke. Absolutely wonderful. That's, I knew, I mean, we had talked about what you were doing, but I guess that number escaped me as far as how successful that program has been. I mean, pushing 900 in just that short, relatively short period of time is, you know, wow. Great work. Great work.
Well, it's nice to see everyone again. I hope everyone is safe and be well.
Yeah. Thank you, Judge Minneke. Thank you, Ms. Bonet. Really appreciate your time tonight. And good luck. If you need anything, we're just a phone call away.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
All right. I see Ms. Rudd, so it must be budget time. So this brings us to item number 17, approval of the First Amendment to fiscal year 2021 budget. Ms. Rudd, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? I was having a little difficulty when I logged on.
If you could turn it up just a little bit, or I don't know if you can turn up a mic. All right, we'll be very, we'll be very quiet and listen.
Okay. Thank you. So there, there are numerous proposals for numerous funds to be amended this evening. This is the first of the amendments this, this fiscal year. If it's acceptable, I'll just summarize the details by fund here, and then at the end, see if there's any questions or concerns. Okay, so for the general fund, we're reducing revenues for the Dream Cruise sponsorship by $80,000. And grants is increasing for numerous grants that are detailed there. Couple of the court has just mentioned, and then we have some COVID-related grants as well. We have a private grant that the clerk's office obtained for the approximately $44,000. And then we have a transfer in from the Roots Fund for a dog park. And on the revenue side, what this, this amendment to the general fund amounts to is a reduction in use of fund balance of nearly $1.8 million. So the total use of fund balance is about $1,095,000. The original budget has a use of fund balance of approximately $2,878,000. The expenditure side is asking to increase expenditures for the COVID-related grants in addition to the court grant for the, which is called the CESF, which provides the software and the various COVID safety expenditures. On the top of the second page, we're reducing the recreation and culture expenditures by about $79,000, and that's due to the cancellation of the Dream Cruise this year. And then finally, the transfers out in the general fund, we're reducing, proposing to reduce by nearly $1.7 million. And that is due to a grant, a COVID-related grant that I will mention momentarily when we're on the Public Safety Fund. But I do also want to mention for the general fund that the city-state shared revenue is currently still budgeted less than what the state of Michigan is estimating for this year. So the state of Michigan, as of late August, is estimating $5.7 million in state shared revenue, and the city has budgeted $4,988,000. For the major roads or major streets and local streets, we're asking to increase expenditures by about $23,000 each to split the GIS inventory of streetlights and data projects. In addition, the local street fund is increasing revenues by approximately $183,000, and that's for a pilot grant from Oakland County. And the expenditures were actually advanced in last fiscal year. So we will not see an increase in expenditures this fiscal year. A special note for these two funds, I wanted to inform the commission that the city's Act 51 revenue is currently budgeted less than the state of Michigan's estimated Act 51 revenue. So currently, the combined going into both major and local street funds, currently, the state of Michigan's estimating about $6,930,000, excuse me. And then Royal Oak's budget is $6,580,000. And again, that's for both funds combined. And then the Public Safety Fund on the bottom of page two, we are recognizing a grant for approximately $1.7 million, and that's the payroll reimbursement grant related to the CARES Act. In addition, a first responder's grant for $136,000. And then we anticipate the transfer in from the general fund to be reduced by approximately the $1.7 million, which is the payroll reimbursement grant. The first responder hazard pay is going to increase expenditures by $136,000. And then there's a request to increase public safety expenditures by $21,000 for a weapons allowance increase that was altered, changed in the union contract. The DDA, there was no net increase in expenditures. However, we're moving $200,000 to the parking fund for the two months of free parking campaign. And we're taking that out of another expenditure line item. So again, the net change is zero. However, when we move money into a transfer line item, we have to do that through a budget amendment as opposed to a budget adjustment. The library fund, there are two smaller grants. And then we have the use of fund balance increasing by $593,000. And mostly, that is due to a capital project for library renovations for $513,000, and then a radio frequency identification tagging project for $80,000. And then, of course, the expenditures, $15,000 for the two grants that were obtained. The Community Development Block Grant Fund, there are increases in capital for Judson Park improvements, which is a carryover from last fiscal year. Then also various park improvements for Sullivan Park, Huntington Woods Park, Fulton Park, and another one in there. Sullivan, I mentioned Sullivan already, I'm sorry. And then additional rehab loans for approximately $154,000. And that is funded by a carryover money from last program year. And then the Roots Fund, there's a request to use donations in the fund balance to be transferred over to the senior center in the amount of $18,000 for some kitchen repairs and upgrades. And then the $2,000 for the dog bench going to the general fund. And the Senior Citizen Service Fund, we are decreasing revenues, program revenues, by about approximately $143,000. And the new use of fund balance will increase by $225,000 for a total use of fund balance of approximately $303,000. And on the expenditure side, that includes $172,000 carryover for the parking lot improvement that we thought we might be able to get in prior to this fiscal year, but we're not able to. And then we have some program expenditure reductions, such as the travel for the seniors. And then we have the increase in the kitchen repair for the $18,000 that's coming from the Roots Program. And then some reductions in the operating line items because of some of the programming reductions. And then finally, on the grants, excuse me, on the funds that get approved by way of resolution is a miscellaneous grants fund, which is a $7,000 increase in revenue and expense, in revenue and expenditures for the West Nile Program. And then the following funds, they are not officially adopted, but we go through them usually, just to keep the commission aware of any of the significant changes that are occurring. And the Parks Capital Fund, we have a grant of $157,000 approximately from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and use of fund balance of about $551,000 increase to a total use of fund balance for the year of about $2.5 million. And that includes the normally Oaks Park development increase of $642,000 for that. And then also the golf course netting at approximately $70,000. Then the Recreation Fund, we have a decrease in program revenue. We're projecting at about $133,000. We do have one increase, and that's the outdoor facility rentals that they think will increase by about $10,000. Excuse me. And so that's a total use of fund balance of $147,000, which is a $48,000 increase. On the expenditure side for recreation, they're anticipating they can reduce operating expenditures by about $75,000, and that's in contracted services and program supplies. The Auto Parking Fund, we have a smaller budget amendment here this evening, but we anticipate that there will be a significant one in the next amendment. But this evening's is the transfer of the $200,000 from the DDA fund to cover the, the summer free parking. And then Farmers Market Fund, the program revenue is budgeted to decrease $140,000, and that's an increase in retained earnings or fund balance use of by $120,000 for an overall use of fund balance at $317,000. And the proposal also includes a reduction in contracted services expenditures by $20,000. Water and Sewer, very small change of $10,000 for a carryover for stormwater utility implementation services. The Ice Arena Fund, we are projecting and requesting to decrease program revenue by $468,000. And there are various expenses that the fund can be reduced by, which is about $52,000. And the end result of that is use of fund balance or retained earnings of approximately $1.1 million. There is a very large capital project. That's why that use of fund balance is so large, of about $820,000 for a new roof, or a portion of the roof, actually, at the Ice Arena. And then finally, the Motor Pool Fund, there is a carryover of approximately $29,000 for some DPS yard environmental consulting work from prior year. And the balance of the letter is, holds a resolution for the general fund and the special revenue funds, which are the only funds we actually resolve to adopt and amend. So I will stop there and see if there's any questions.
All right, let's take in there. Questions from Ms. Rudd. I see Commissioner Duba.
Yes, back to the top, Ms. Rudd, to make sure I understand that after these budget amendments, we're spending less than half out of the general fund that we had originally budgeted. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and actually, there is another large grant that is not incorporated into this amendment because we have not really finalized it or decided how we would qualify. But there is an opportunity that Oakland County has for another $1.3 million of COVID grant funding that we're looking at. And if that's the case, it's likely a significant part of that is police and fire-related. And so we can reduce the transfer by possibly that amount to the Public Safety Fund to, to help the general fund.
Good news. Well done. Any other questions from Ms. Rudd? Commissioner Douglas?
I know. I'll move approval of the budget resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion.
Just reiterate what Commissioner Duba said. Well done.
All right. Yeah, Ms. Rudd, thank you. Lot going on these days. We know how hard you're working in particular, Lee, and of course, everybody that, you know, influences those budget line items. So we're grateful for your agility and, and this agility like this in the positive ways thus far. Times are going, hard to come by, so. Call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Duba?
Yes.
Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Vassar?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the resolution passes. All right, this brings us to item 18, which is the approval of the Help America Vote Act, Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act Agreement with the state of Michigan. Do I see City Clerk Halas here? I saw her.
Yeah.
She's moving around my screen. There she is. Okay, sorry. You have no idea what I'm looking at, but you moved positions on the screen for me.
I'll just be really brief. This is just a reimbursement that any community within the state of Michigan, whoever purchased any equipment between January and August of this year, could apply for reimbursement of up to $30,000. And we are receiving the max of $30,000. So I'm just asking for your approval of the resolution provided.
Wonderful, wonderful. Questions from Ms. Halas? Commissioner Dubb?
Just want to clarify, so this is for the high-speed voting machine that I think there was some debate over during budget time, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, but we did end up going forward with putting that in the budget, and now you've gone out and found the money for it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, well done. All right, great news. I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubb, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Mr. Macy?
Just like to clarify with some of Commissioner Dubb's snark, this machine was $90,000, not $30,000.
Now it appears it's $60,000. Commissioner Prush?
But as I understand it, Ms. Halas and her department are processing over 22,000 absentee ballots. So the.
We're over 24,000 right now.
Well, it's 24,000 right now. Out of how many registered voters in the city? Only 30-some, I think?
Oh, no, we're just under 50,000.
Okay, but still, if you're.
Yeah.
About half the registered voters are going to be voting absentee. That's an enormous amount. So I think having this high-speed scanner is just, I don't know how we would do it without it. And I don't know how communities are going to do their counting without those scanners. It's going to be a long night, and we're never going to have the full answer, I don't think, on election day.
So far, we've received 34% back, so that's good so far.
Excellent work. City Clerk Halas. All right, so we have a motion on the table. And I will call for the vote. Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Vassar?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas, sorry, I didn't catch that.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just want to make sure, and I vote yes. All right. Great. Ms. Halas, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great effort, and, you know, we know how busy you are, and, you know, we pray you get through not just November 3rd, but whatever extra count we got to do as necessary through the midnight hour. So best of luck to you and your team.
Thank you.
So this brings us to approval of the recreational marijuana ordinance amendment, second reading.
Aaron, commissioners, this is a second reading of an ordinance that was approved on first reading at our last meeting. Couple cleanups, if you will, on the recreational marijuana licensing ordinance. First of all, this amendment would allow the city to accept prequalification for a medical marijuana license for purposes of a recreational marijuana license application, along with prequalification from the state for a recreational marijuana license itself. Again, the idea being to broaden the pool of potential applicants that we will have for recreational marijuana licenses here in the city. Second would be to delete or remove the language that was suggesting or requiring that an applicant conduct outreach prior to the time that they are actually approved for a recreational marijuana license slot as one of the criteria that city manager's office could use in terms of the competitive process to evaluate or determine which of the competing applications was better suited for operation here in the city. Again, the thinking being that until an applicant actually receives one of the licensed slots, that any of the outreach would be premature and might cause unnecessary angst amongst our residents and business owners. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, we're recommending approval of the ordinance on second reading.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Prush?
I don't have any questions, but I'll move for approval on second reading.
We have a motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Vassar?
I agree with the idea of expanding the pool of applicants by allowing the medical marijuana licensing to be something that can be used as a way for people to get the foot in the door. I'm going to still vote no on this amendment, simply because I still believe, as I did at our last meeting, that having a little bit of public engagement in the initial stages is a positive thing. And that's something I prefer not to discourage.
Okay. Commissioner Dubb?
I appreciate that point of view, but clearly, we're not discouraging public engagement. We're just not mandating it from every one of the hopefuls that comes knocking on our door. I think those that really want to do their due diligence will still be free to. But it's good policy, I think, to let the applicants go about the process in that regard as they see fit. And our mandate comes on back end, whether or not we demand that they execute on a community engagement plan. So folks who actually have a chance at getting the license, not everyone who dreams of getting a license is going to be, you know, engaging the community.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Mr. Vassar?
No.
Mr. Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubb?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight, notwithstanding anything else for the betterment of our neighbors, friends, and family and the city of Royal Oak. Certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Prush. Discussion on this motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. Start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Dubb?
Yes.
Mr. Prush?
Yeah.
Mr. Vassar?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and I sign off by saying thank you, colleagues, tonight for your hard work. Welcome, Mr. or Commissioner Colo, for your first meeting. You certainly earned your $20 this evening. Expect that their taxes will be taken out of that paycheck, so don't go buy Carly something nice, okay? You got to save up a little bit, my friend.
My grandma used to say, "Don't spend it all in one place."
These days is going to be a challenge. But seriously, thank you, Commissioner Colo. Nice job tonight. And thank you to all the staff for everything you do to prepare for these meetings, and we look forward to the next time we meet. Thanks.